It's 5:30, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're going out of order, so we will go down into the new business action item, which is to approve an MOU between the, our school district and the University of Kentucky.
Yes, so we have a student, a Kentucky, University of Kentucky student who would like to do her internship with Megan McAllister, who's counselor at Lakeland Middle School. And in order for her to be able to do that, we have to sign the MOU. So Michelle had had a question because it says something in there about University of Kentucky curriculum. So I verified that, that, that is for her classes, not to be used in our schools. She will use, she'll shadow Megan and use whatever Megan uses.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about the MOU? I do not. I'll move to approve the MOU between Lakeland Joint School District and the University of Kentucky.
I'll second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have one discussion item, which is student clubs. At the last board meeting, we tabled student clubs with the intention that we needed more time to think about it. During policy committee, the perception was that maybe we were having a workshop. We never said we wanted a workshop. So we need to decide how we're gonna come to some resolution with the student clubs. If we're not going to hold a workshop, then we can put it on the next agenda. But we're not really having any discussion about it. And so that's, that to me is just kind of a, I mean, do we have enough information to decide if we want to proceed with, you know, school-supported only, anything and everything, or no clubs at all? I mean, do we have enough information? Do we need to have conversation about that? Because we do need to give the district some direction.
I'm still struggling with the difference between the two. How that applies to the individual clubs that we have. I got the list of clubs and activities and so forth in order at the high school, and it's fairly extensive. Most of the, the clubs are curriculum affiliated in some form or another. But for example, you could take student council. Student council isn't directly affiliated with a curriculum anywhere, but it's certainly important.
Correct.
And it's something that I think we want. But then you have something like the Human Rights Club, which is kind of totally away from academic-type approaches.
Okay.
So where's the line, I guess, is what I'm struggling with.
Well, it's my understanding if we do school-sponsored, they have to align with the beliefs and values of the school system, our school system specifically. They have to be, a teacher has to be involved. And does a student have to also be like wanting the club? Or that portion, I can't remember.
If it's a school-sponsored club, it can be, it can be a staff-initiated club. If it's a non-school-sponsored club, it has to completely be student-initiated, student-led.
Okay, student-initiated, student-led.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
Based on what you just said. So the board put forth a resolution earlier about critical race theory.
Correct.
We don't do that. And we've talked about another resolution with regard to gender issues to give some direction to teachers about how we want to handle when conversations come up in school. If those two resolutions are on the book, I'm going back to what Michelle just said as far as aligning with the, the values of the district, does that help us delineate like what those values are, I guess? I'm not, does that help us, or does that still put us legally kind of in dark waters?
Well, it may help from the standpoint that once you, if we have both those resolutions in place, that would give us some criteria by which to measure individual clubs against whether or not they fall within, you know, that criteria or not.
But that's only two different topics, I mean, really. And our values, I think, hit more than just those two areas, one way or the other. Well, going back to what I read for student clubs and non-student clubs.
Do you want one of us to read that for you?
Um, sure. I'm having eye surgery tomorrow and I don't have my contacts in and I can't see. So my, my vision is limited. I mean, it's not, I just have to have it in front of my eyeballs. Well, it does state that
it being our, our court policy?
No, this is what we received, no, because I can't see that.
Oh, okay.
It said, "The important thing to know is that there's two basic kinds of, kinds of clubs, sponsored or curriculum clubs and non-sponsored or non-curriculum clubs. The club-sponsored clubs have the support and the direction of the district. They're on subjects related to classes the school offers, French club or debate club. Sponsored clubs support the school and are directed by school staff. Non-sponsored or non-curriculum clubs aren't related to specific class and they don't carry the endorsement of the district. They can be groups like the Gay-Straight Alliance, Young Republicans, or the Good News Club. While the school provides space for groups to meet and they provide a willing staff member to make sure the school rules are followed, staff don't lead or direct the meeting. Non-sponsored club activities are student-driven." So, and clubs that act, advocate particular religious or political beliefs must be non-sponsored. So therein itself is a distinct difference between sponsored and non-sponsored.
So you have to be able to make a nexus between the club and a course.
Correct.
Student council, the nexus would be leadership.
There is a, there is a class that all of student council students are in.
Key Club, National Honor Society.
Chess Club.
Those are, those are important clubs. National Honor Society, kids have, if, if kids are part of that group, they have access to scholarship opportunities. So I don't know what the nexus would be for that club to a class.
And that's the very issue that I struggle with. You know, some of the clubs, which I think are worthwhile and fitting with even our value systems, but they're not curriculum-oriented.
Correct.
Well, the, like the National Honor Society, though, I don't know that it has to be a physical textbook relation, but I would see the National Honor Society as obviously those kids that maybe dual-enrolled, you know, they are the top whatever percentage of their class. I mean, it's obviously very academic. The whole premise of it is academics. So I don't think there would be a hard one with that. The Key Club, I don't remember all about them, but I think a lot of those civics or leadership classes, I don't see why they would have to go by at the wayside just because we didn't have at this juncture a textbook, so to speak, for that. There was another one that was similar. It teaches entrepreneurial ship and, and small business or business period. I can't remember the name of it, but I know they have a type of curriculum, whether that class
Are you thinking of BPA?
What was that?
BPA, Business Professionals of America?
Uh, no, it was, it starts with a J.
Oh, JSA?
Yes, yes.
Junior Statesman?
Yep, I believe that was the one. Anyways, I mean, we could just, it would just be a matter of going down the list and deciding, you know, where it falls. If it does, I mean, there might be some that don't fall within alignment with the curriculum, or some type of academics within the district. I mean, typically, I don't know how our chess club operates, but typically the chess club is part of the math department. So I don't, I don't know where ours falls. I guess you could look at the history, but it's typically in the math department.
Right, it's, it's critical thinking and strategic thinking.
So I guess the question still is, do we need a
A workshop.
A full workshop, which means everybody literally gets together and irons it out? Or do we want to do it more like we do policy? A policy committee and the other committees where there's a feedback survey of some type? Or do we have enough information just to forego all of those options and set a discussion and vote at a meeting? It sounds like Trusty Jones might need more information.
I don't know if it would be helpful for us to, you know, walk through the list and kind of give an opinion about where each one falls and see how that shakes out in terms of whether some would be included that we would not want to include, or some would be excluded because we
Right, and is that just Lakeland, or is that just
This is Lakeland.
Okay, so we don't even have Timberlake?
They have it on the wall, so it
Oh, gotcha, okay, well, we don't have Timberlake.
We have that list of approved clubs.
That's true, we do have that one.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking, just take the entirety of the list and look. I mean, we should be able to do that, I would think, if we just looked at the list, regardless of what school it's in, then we should find
Right.
the curriculum that correlates with it or doesn't, or we would think. If we decide to go that way.
And if we choose to go that route, I think that would help guide us with, would it be advantageous to just go school-sponsored? And so that we know 100% that everything is going to be curriculum-based? Or if we go non-
Or at least academically based.
Maybe not, maybe not, maybe not curriculum-based, but academically based.
See, I could manage that definition easier. The curriculum thing just
The curricu-, yeah, okay. So maybe that's what we look at, is that it's academic-based rather than a curriculum, a specific curriculum standard.
Right.
And
See, I'll give you an example, one that will come into question is Idaho Drug for Youth. It's not curriculum-based, it's not really academic-based, but it's certainly
What about health?
I was gonna say, their health class.
I mean, it might, I don't want to
I think there is an actual standard. If we look at Idaho standards, under the health standards, I think there is something in there. They have to be able to know, you know, where to go for help, you know, what's identified as harmful, unhealthy versus healthy. I, I really don't think it would be that hard, really, if we look at the tools we have, whether it's, you know, the, the actual standards themselves or just what's happening academically within each school? Or I think it would be fairly clear-cut with those things, I would think, I don't know, who knows? I mean, there's always something that someone else sees that could change that.
I was just looking at that list.
Is that big one a drug?
Twenty-one.
Some of them are athletics, too.
Not that are on this club list. We have nine on here, but there's 21 on here.
So some of them didn't come, they didn't bring them forward, then?
Okay.
It's all right. It's all right. We all have our impairments.
Sixteen, okay, so it's not so bad. There's like five missing because of, or fourteen. I count fourteen, I just counted twenty-one. Yeah, BPA is not on here. FCC LA, FFA. The Idaho Drug for Youth is not on there. Magic is not on there. The Gathering and Role-Playing Games.
I don't have anything for that. I do have Idaho Drug for Youth Club.
Do you?
Yeah, Mark Sicilla is the advisor for that.
A Science Bowl, I don't see that on there.
I don't have that. I do have BPA.
Snap, Crackle, Improv is not on there.
No, that's probably Allison.
Yeah, so we probably need to reconcile whatever all those lists are you guys were reading because I just pulled up the running
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I just got. Bob picked this up at Lakeland. So my thought was, well, we don't have Timberlake's, and then it was, we'll go with the sheet, so I did. But there's a few more clubs on here than there is on our sheet.
Right, right, yeah, I was gonna say, there's not that many. Although the sheet is just those in the last couple of years that have come to the board, but yeah, any club operating was supposed to come.
So I'd say they were supposed to have re-
All of them.
Yeah. That's right, we're, we're getting there little by little, right?
That's right, yeah. One step at a time.
Right.
Yeah.
Wrong was in built in the day.
It should have been. So where do we want to go from here?
You know, it seems to me, you know, after hearing the definition of it we were provided, which doesn't really fit our needs, I don't think. It sounds like we need to establish those two definitions in keeping with what we have and what we would like to have. And, you know, part of it might be curriculum, part of it might be academic, part of it might be leadership-oriented, and part of it might be some of their talent. For example, that band, that's, that's obviously connected with a course.
The struggle is, and what we have to consider, is if we don't go school-sponsored and we go the other way, we cannot control who comes into our school.
Yeah, I understand that. What I'm suggesting is that we, we establish those two definitions in keeping with what we want.
Two definitions, meaning school-sponsored or non-school?
Yes, yeah.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Yeah, if we get, you know, get that groundwork established,
Okay.
then, you know, we can decide whether or not they're in or out.
Okay. Sounds fair? No, that sounds fair.
It's a suggestion.
So school-sponsored is what we have to figure, because non-school-sponsored means anything and everything, you cannot choose.
Anything outside of school-sponsored.
Everything, yeah, exactly. And I mean, you, you can choose, you just have to be very cautious because you open yourself up for like that little, right, yeah, the equal access. Exactly.
And I don't have any, any concern about not allowing non-school-sponsored clubs as long as the school-sponsored clubs are within a spectrum there. So I always, this is what we have accepted, school-sponsored clubs. If it doesn't fall within that category, it's a non-school and we would not allow it. I mean, I think that's where we're headed, but I'm not sure.
Oh, what I thought I heard you say was that you didn't, it didn't matter if it was non-school-sponsored or school-sponsored, that you were good with either club, but we need to figure out the school-sponsored definition.
Yeah. But in listening to the conversation, it sounded like we were not going to allow non-school-sponsored. Because if you do that, it opens the door.
Yeah, there's no control.
And so
And even if we are anti-critical race theory, and even if we do define gender and take a stand on that, a club is a club.
Right.
And there is no control, even if it's against what the school stands for.
It could be satanic worship or it could be anything, you know?
Exactly.
And places we don't want to go.
Correct.
So in, in my mind, what I'm, what I'm hearing and I'm thinking is that we establish what is acceptable as a school-sponsored club.
Okay.
Anything that's not, not within that definition would fall out as a non-school-sponsored club, which we don't allow.
Correct. Okay.
Does that sound right, Ramona?
Yeah, that sounds fine with me. I, in my head, it's fairly clear, you know, if we throw all the other stuff away and go back to, you know, first principles, what are, we're education. We're all about education and academics. And I think if we stay focused on that, you know, the law, the statute's very helpful in defining what that is. IDAPA rule defines what that is. The standards to teach defines what that is. We really don't have to think hard about it. We just have to make sure, I think the definition's there. We need to pull it together and put it on a piece of paper, electronic or otherwise. Then align the, the clubs that, that fit under there. I really don't think it's gonna remove that, that many clubs. I really, I really don't. I would have to look a little better at the classes we do offer at the high school level. Because the other thing we need to keep in mind also is that our academics reach beyond Lakeland and Timberlake. They also encompass K-Tech, you know, if we have students at K-Tech or if we have dual-enrolled students that are in some coursework at NIC. So we need to make sure those courses are, we take into account also, which there again is still defined by statute, State Department Education, IDAPA. You know, there, I think the definition's fairly clear. It's just putting it all in one, one spot so we can go from there.
Right.
Once you identify what you want those criteria to be, then I can embed those criteria into the application itself so that they address what, what course is this linked to? What standards are addressed, academic standards? I mean, we can, I can put some of those things in once the board decides how you want the criteria to read, okay?
And also with the school-sponsored, if we truly are gonna go that route and we say, you know, that there has to be staff member, you know, teacher, coach, whomever this person is that's in charge of these clubs, then that should be fairly easy, too, because, you know, I'm sure that the teacher or that whomever knows how this club applies to whatever subject they're involved with or academic leaning or what, or what have you, you know? Like FFA, for instance. I mean, that's, you know, they could have all kinds of clubs really under the, under the FFA, you know, if they started pulling it apart.
Right.
For all types of things.
So that comes back to, do we have a, a workshop to create a definition? Iron all of that out? Or do we tack it on to one of our
Policy.
And gen- Policy? Will Policy committed to come up with that definition?
Ultimately, will it be in a policy somewhere?
Yes, it will be.
I just pulled up our policy.
It is, yeah.
Two twenty-five.
Has to be rewritten.
Oh, yeah, it absolutely would have to be. That was my whole thing of, because we weren't
Right, okay, so we can direct the policy committee to rewrite the policy to include a definition of school-sponsored.
But I think we, we need to work on what our definition of that is.
To give to the policy.
To give to the policy committee to rewrite the policy.
I do, I really do.
Because I think this, that's, I think that is very much a, you know, a our responsibility as the board.
To say, these are our
Yeah. This is the expectation and this is where we want to go with it.
Yes, yep. So do we all want to give a deadline that we can come up with some information individually, ship it to, or email it to Rosanna, who can bring it to policy committee? And we can go from there? But the direction of the board is, you know, sponsored clubs should, you know, be this or should be that or whatever. And then if you don't give your input by the deadline, then you need to bring it up at the board meeting when we have the policy to go over, because if it's not hitting what you want, there's your opportunity to contribute.
To have a discussion. To add, yeah.
Because it needs to, I mean
Whatever.
Yeah, giving the policy committee direction is, is critical.
Yep.
Okay.
So, so when is your, when is your next policy?
The next policy committee's next Wednesday. So a week from today. Would that be sufficient time? Or would you like two more weeks? Because we meet the first and the third.
Two more weeks will be the next board meeting.
Right, but the policy won't be ready, because we need
Right.
But it's the first and third Wednesday as policy. So you can have three weeks, but will that motivate?
Three, yeah, three weeks is a handful.
Three weeks? Ramona?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I'm good with that, three weeks.
Okay, so that would be, I'll hand you my little calendar.
I mean, I just was trying to, just like you said, is that motivating to give three weeks? Or would it be more motivating to get on it and get it done in, in one week?
Yeah, and have it done by next, go back here.
By the second of November?
Yeah, I don't know that the policy committee could undertake it by then because there's a lot that goes into notifying everybody, getting feedback, all that kinds of things, but
Oh, true, okay, yeah. So, yeah, the three weeks would probably be that.
Say this is what's coming and prepare it to send out. If we, if we got it all done and backed by the second, then it could be prepared, I guess, or If we, if we got it all done and backed by the second, then it can be prepared, I guess, for, uh, following.
The December board meeting.
Yeah, and the following policy, so then policy committee can actually hopefully formulate it by the sixteenth of November, then it would be done by the December board meeting?
Right, yep.
Okay. All right, so by a week from today, then we have to have something spring order written, at least our idea written.
Okay. So by, by next Wednesday, which is the second, give policy, give your input to Rosanna. She'll bring it to policy committee.
Okay.
And then the policy committee can kind of toss it around, hopefully get the policy completed at that meeting. Then it can be sent out to patrons and be able to be brought back to the board on the December board meeting. Because we do have to have direction, because we don't want to start next year and, and flounder.
We have a couple actually who are waiting to find out what the board does so that they can come forward with, I know, some club activities for this year, so.
Well, whatever we choose to do with the policy now will be implemented next to school year. Because we're not going to disrupt what we already said is a go.
Correct, yeah, no. If we've already approved it, it, it can stay in.
Right, no, these are new clubs that, like, there were, there was the, the Young Life Club that was tabled.
Yeah.
And they're waiting to kind of see what direction the board's gonna go and.
Okay. Do they understand that if, even if we did approve that one, that they can't have a non-staff person leading?
Yeah.
And participating in those, okay, because they can't do that.
And we may need to specify if staff is a full-time employee or if we allow, I guess, teachers to be the staff.
Okay. Yep, that needs to be a part of the conversation.
All right, any further discussion on school clubs?
Well, I have none.
Okay. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four, two oh six one B.
So moved.
A second.
Having a motion in a second, I need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Bain?
Yes.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, vice, sorry, Vice Chair Gissom?
Yes.
Okay, we are in executive session.
Lock it down.
We're recording, we've come out of executive session. There are no action, there's no action that needs to be taken on anything. We'll go ahead and end the meeting, it is seven ten, yeah. Need a adjournment?
Maybe job.